Called a meeting to order. First is an invocation, we have a guest minister tonight, Ron Loughman, U.A.R.A. Community Church. Can you come forward?
May we pray together? Father God, we come before you tonight with gratitude. We come thankful for you being a God of love and of peace and that you are in this room with us tonight. You have poured your grace and mercy out over us and we are truly thankful. We thank you for making each one of us, each in this room and each that resides within this city, in your image. And because of that, we have great value and we thank you for the opportunity to be good stewards of that value as we get to love our neighbors as ourselves. God, I'm thankful tonight for those that you've allowed to serve our city, our mayor, our city council, our city manager and our city staff and employees. I ask that God that tonight you would allow them to experience your love and peace and joy during this Christmas season. I ask that you'd protect them and their families. God, I pray that same prayer for each citizen of our city, that we would all experience your blessings this season. God, I pray tonight that these leaders that you would give them wisdom and strength and courage as they make decisions and do as best that they can to do what is right and good for all citizens of Albemarle. May they be able to put aside their own desires and interests for those of others. May they act in love towards each other and come together to do what is good for all. May the words of Micah 6:8 be their guide to do what is right, to love mercy and to walk humbly with you, God. We thank you again for our mayor and this council, the city staff and employees, our first responders and all those who worked to make this place we call home such a wonderful city. And we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much. Number three, approval of the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes for the November 15, 2022 council budget planning work session and November 21, 2022 regular meeting.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lauder. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a couple of agenda adjustments. I need to add an item to consideration of a Golden Leaf grant acceptance.
Move approval.
And one more, a couple more. I need to add personnel to the closed session and I also need to add to prevent the premature disclosure of an award to the closed session.
Same.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We are coming to the close of the four years for the current city council and I want to tell both of you that we'll be stepping off. Councilmember Lauder and Councilmember Hughes, it's been a pleasure to work with you and we've enjoyed the last four years. Now I want to give you a minute of privilege to say anything you would like to say. Ms. Lauder?
You would call on me. I would just say that I've been very blessed with getting to serve on this council. I would have liked to stayed on for a long time, but I got started a little bit late. So here's wishing all of you a great day to sing the praises of this city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hughes?
As I complete my term on city council, I reflect over the past nine years. I leave today with a wealth of knowledge, the importance of being open-minded, to value other people's opinion, to consider other ideas along with mine, and to end up with a sound decision or result. It has been my honor to serve the citizens of Albemarle. I say with gratitude many thanks for the support provided from this council and city staff, the opportunities to learn and the friendships I have made during these nine years. As I remember the many and various council meetings, one topic that brought citizens to these council chambers was the discussion of animals. It was evident that the individuals present were passionate about horses and cats and pet pigs, to name a few. Much has been accomplished during my tenure and more to be done by the new council. The city of Albemarle has experienced growth recently that has not taken place in several years. This is a culmination of effort from city staff and your elected officials. More work is to be done and I look forward to seeing the future successes of the city. As I leave tonight, I would like to end with the quote from Oliver Wendell Holmes that I shared when I decided to run for office. "The great thing in the world is not so much where we stand as it is in what direction we are moving."
Thank you very much.
God bless y'all.
Now be in order to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Lauder. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We're joined tonight by our Supreme Court Judge, Judge Bridges, who will be doing our swearing in.
Mayor, good evening, councilmembers, thank you so much for your duty to the city of Albemarle and thank you very much for having me here this evening. My pleasure to admit to the House of Office to Christopher Wain Witten, who come up later. Please begin. Please begin after me. I said your name. You solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and law of the United States and the Constitution and law of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as the council member to the House of Office. Congratulations. Next, the day of after lunch, please come forward. I remember you. Good to see you. Congratulations. Please put your left hand on the dial, raise your right, and begin after me. I said your name. You solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and law of the United States and the Constitution and law of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as the council member to the House of Office. Congratulations. Right. Thank you all again for having me.
Judge Bridges, thank you very much. I don't know how many times that has been you've done this for us now. We thank you very much and appreciate you coming.
Thank you for having me.
I'll call our meeting back to order now and again, I'm going to get a minute of privilege for our newly elected to say something if they would like. And I'll give Chris, since you were re-elected, if you want to start.
Well, I'm pleased and honored to be back here. Looking forward to another four years to continue some of the work that we've started. It's kind of hard, you know, you've been on here nine years. Martha and I came on at the same time. I guess she's gone. I didn't get a chance to say anything, but we came on at the same time. So with all the things that have begun and are now coming, some of them to fruition, or at least well under construction, it's kind of hard to see those in the middle. I'm glad I'm going to stick around to hopefully see some of them pushed on down the road. But that's, I appreciate everybody that's supporting me and everyone that voted for me and I'm very honored and humbled to be here again.
Councilmember Bramblett, welcome back.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the privilege of serving on this board. I guarantee you one thing, I will do everything in my power to make Albemarle a better place and a great place to live for all of you and me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt, you're the newest on the board.
With the least to say. I'm just looking forward to this opportunity to continue to serve the citizens of the city. I'm going to have a lot to learn, so it's going to be a learning experience, but I'm looking forward to it.
And to the families that came out tonight, thank you very much for coming out and supporting your spouse or maybe, I don't believe we have any. Yeah, we have a parent, one parent, so thank you very much for coming. Number seven, election of mayor pro temp. Process is by secret ballot unless council wants us to do otherwise by motion.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion that we just do away with the secret ballot and just do a verbal vote.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion that we re-elect Mayor Pro Temp Hall, well, Councilmember Hall as Mayor Pro Temp.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to re-elect Mayor Pro Temp Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number eight, consider the appointment of the city manager.
Make a motion that we appoint Michael Ferris as city manager.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Consider the appointment of the city attorney.
Move that we continue to approve Brett.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve Brett Burch as our city attorney.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 10, normally we make the provision that we let our city manager make the other provision for the other officials that will be appointed. Council wishes to do so. I think he has told you in his memo who he would do and if council wants to do that, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion that we re-elect Mayor Pro Temp Hall, well, Councilmember Hall as Mayor Pro Temp.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to re-elect Mayor Pro Temp Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number eight, consider the appointment of the city manager.
Make a motion that we appoint Michael Ferris as city manager.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number eight, consider the appointment of the city attorney.
Move that we continue to approve Brett.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve Brett Burch as our city attorney.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 10, normally we make the provision that we let our city manager make the other provision for the other officials that will be appointed. Council wishes to do so. I think he has told you in his memo who he would do and if council wants to do that, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 11 is several various boards. They are in your agenda package. First is the Central Line of Regional Council. You have a delegate and an alternate delegate.
Move that the delegate and alternate delegate remain as presented in the council agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend that we appoint Delegate Martha Su-Hall and alternate delegate Chris Whitley.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Your honor, do we appoint, do we need to reappoint Tiffany or do we, is she, she is there until she is reappointed or does she have a term or did, does Martha have a term? I mean, was there a term to either of them? And I think that's just something that we need to find out before.
I do not recall ever being a term. Each council has been chosen after a privilege.
Well, and with that said, I just, like other things, I think folks have got to be willing to do it. So I would, I would like, if there's someone here that would like to be that delegate or two that would like to be that delegate, I think it's a very important board that, mainly because it is not regulated by anybody, it's out there and it just has its own board and that's who runs the program. So, you know, if I would like to know if Tiffany would like to stay on there, if we've got folks who are interested in doing that, and if Martha wants to stay on there.
Does one of the delegates have to be a native council member?
Not necessarily.
See, I think, you know, we don't know enough about it, I think, or at least I don't.
Council can put this off if you want to the next meeting.
I think it makes good sense. Because if she doesn't want to serve, I don't want to appoint her to the delegate, as a delegate.
So with that following, do we ask the manager to contact both of them to find out what they're, what they would like to do? I mean, I think that we need to know.
Yeah.
I mean, so can we do that?
Yes. Yep.
One other item I bring up there too, it's not listed on here and I don't think we've done it, the SCUSA Board, the Transportation Advisory Board for the county, I'm on that. And I dug a little deeper to find out what position I was filling because I thought it was because of RPO and it's not. Benton was on there and when he went off council, council or Michael or somebody appointed me to do that. So is that one, so apparently we do have a seat on the Transportation Advisory Board or SCUSA Board.
The city does.
The city does.
I think that's another one we need to make sure.
Another one, need to make sure about that and maybe add that to this. I mean, I'd be glad.
We've had a seat on that thing for many years.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll add that to it. Municipal Power Agency Board of Commissioners.
Is this, does this?
Approval as presented. Delegate Michael Ferris, alternate running Michael, second alternate Martha Su-Hall, and then recommend.
There would not be a third.
Okay, we don't need a third alternate. Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is the Municipal Power Agency Rate Committee. You have a couple of recommendations there with some changes. And I think it is definitely to our advantage to have employees in the rate positions.
Yes.
Move approval as Jay is the delegate.
Have a motion delegate including Ferris as alternate or not?
If, I mean, that's fine unless there's somebody else that would like to be that rate person. Hearing you say that we need, that we need an employee, would there be another employee other than Mr. Ferris that would serve in that one? I mean, is there a reason to have a different employee there?
Not that I know of. I think you want somebody with the most experience in them, but it's two seats. I have a motion.
Second. Your motion include the alternate as well.
Have a motion to appoint Michael, Jay Boils as a delegate and recommend Michael Ferris as an alternate is in the motion. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Rocky River RPO. Currently delegate is Chris Whitley and alternate is Martha Su-Hall.
I move approval of Chris Whitley and Martha Su-Hall.
Motion by Councilmember Bramblett.
And I would just say that these are opportunities for educational opportunities if anybody.
Anybody's chomping at the bit.
That's exactly right because I just needed to say that, Chris.
Glad to do it. I'd be glad to get somebody else for it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bramblett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Rocky River RPO and these two are employee positions.
Move to approve Kevin Robinson for appointment as a delegate and Ross Holshouser as an alternate.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge for Michael, for, excuse me, Kevin Robinson as the delegate and alternate Ross Holshouser. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, at this time, I'm going to stand in recess for about five minutes in case you want to greet any of the people that were here. Several of them have already left and we'll come back. Meeting back to order. I have no unannounced delegations. The municipal calendar is in your agenda if council has any questions. Next is your consent agenda. Number 13, accept the abstract of votes for the city general election. Number 14, request to approve incentive for city employee United Way campaign. Number 15, consider approval of bid 2023-move Marie Bells of Surplus Hay. And number 16, request approval of street closures for the Steel Runs Car Show.
Move to approve, consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under new business, physical gear 22, 23, street resurfacing list is in your agenda. Does council have any questions or comments?
I know this was a very tedious process, but I just want to say thank you. I know that everybody on this council and probably watching or listening right now is tired of me talking about North Second Street, but that's, that's been a consistent topic of conversation among constituents with me is North Second headed south coming up the hill there before you get to Ludlow and Salisbury. So I want to thank staff for paying attention to that and also there on South Second Street as well as you leave the post office coming back toward Courthouse. That's a roller coaster if you're going slow or fast through there. So thank you for the, for the attention on those streets.
What I think we need to though tell for the public's input or for their understanding, Mayor, is that, that there are 13 spots, a total of 2.3 miles for an estimated cost of right over $900,000. You know, we talk about, and I'm looking right at Ross when I say this, if the rate we're going or the rate we've been going, it'd take us 75 years to get to a, get back to a road. So thanks for the due diligence you gave this in the allocation of everything, Ross.
You also might want to mention this year is a mill and field for every road. We're not doing the other alternative this year. We're trying to get the aggressive and be mill and field. That's the reason to be less roads, but we'll be doing a better job and not just preserving, actually replacing. Thank you, staff.
Your honor, when will that start? When will they, or do we know when that will, when those projects will start? Just an idea?
Right now, our timeline is to have all our spec and construction documents done. Hopefully by the end of this month.
Okay.
Sometime in January, we should advertise it to put it up for bid. So it'll be a, it'll be a springtime project.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Number 18, the Governor Finance Officers Association Award for Excellent in Financial Reporting. We have been very fortunate again to win that this year. I think we have an excellent finance department that works hard to make sure we stay within the boundaries of the law and make sure we meet all the state law requirements. Thank you very much for that. And council, if you have any comments, I'm going to have Jake come up to the front and present him with this and then he can make any comment.
As you're doing that, I just, I do have one, one question. Is this something that we actually pay for, Michael?
No, we don't pay for the award.
We don't, but we pay for the membership of the organization.
Yeah, like Electric City's Public Power Awards and others, Kalia and those sorts of things. We're members.
Okay. And one membership for the entire city.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd just like to say thank you to Finance Department first and foremost, you know, working with them every day. You know, we're dealing with it day in and day out, the audit and CAFRA Award is a great chance to see all your hard work come to fruition. But also want to send a special thanks to all city staff that are great working with the Finance Department. We are really lucky and blessed to have a group of people who communicate so well and work so diligently together so that all the financial reporting and internal controls can be maintained as best we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Coming around the table, first I'll say, Jay, would you tell Chin Dang we're proud of him and congratulations on his operator of the year award? Thank you very much.
That's good.
Mr. Ferris.
I don't have any to add.
Mr. Townsend.
Well, first I'd like to welcome our two newest members of the council. Both of them come to the council with different knowledge of city operations, you know, from different aspects, you know, by Captain, well, former law enforcement officer Captain Hunt, his years of law enforcement experience, he's knowledgeable about city operations. And then Dr. Bramblett, his past years on serving as council and on other boards and organizations. Welcome, welcome aboard. Look, we got our work cut out for us. And then last, I'd just like to say prayers for Moore County.
Councilmember Bramblett.
I'd just like to remind you that I'm located in the middle of downtown. I'm very visible and believe you me, I already have a list. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aldridge.
I would like to say congratulations again to Councilmember Whitley on his reelection bid. He has served our city well since 2013 or 2014, I guess it is. And also welcome to Councilmember Hunt and Dr. Bramblett. It's, it's nice to have everybody up here. I feel very confident about what we've accomplished over the last few years and I feel very confident about where we as a city are moving. It doesn't mean we're always going to agree on every topic, but it means we're unified in a council to move this city forward. You know, if this is any indication of what this council is going to get done, we're, we're setting a record timing for meeting time tonight.
I like that.
This might be the first time I've seen the kickoff of Monday Night Football in a long time.
You won't.
I won't, okay. We got closed session. But I do also want to say, I think this is the first time we have, we have an anomaly here of haircuts, so we're, we're definitely going in the right direction.
Oh, no.
We got the ball vote.
Y'all might be in trouble.
You gotta get with the program.
We outnumber you.
Steve, let's stop off.
There's a majority of them.
Bald is beautiful. All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
Chris, welcome, David. It's going to be, it's going to be fun. We do have a lot of work cut out for us. Three things, and I will, I will echo prayers for Moore County. I'll start with that. The second thing I have on here is that the Stanley County Concert Band, and I don't know if our PIO is still here, he is, Stanley County Concert Band, which is made up of folks from all over the county that have ever played an instrument, a wind instrument, that kind of thing. Their Christmas concert is Thursday night and they have asked David if we would publicize that because the city has a lot of following and they would like for us to do that. And I told them we would do that. Parade is Saturday, this Saturday at 4 o'clock. I guess my assumption is, is that we're in the same spot that we've always been and David, you're about right there at the corner of the YMCA is where we'll end up being. end up being.
Council, please bring in place by 3:30.
3:30, and we, now we're throwing candy, that's a new thing, so, well, I'll bring our own. Let me know if you need me to get your Santa hats, or if you have your own, or you know where yours might be, because if you don't, I may have some extra, I'll be happy to bring them, particularly for those bald heads that we got there. It's going to be a little bit cold.
We all carry toboggans.
That's good, that's all.
Mr. Whitley?
I carry a toboggan with me everywhere I go. Just, welcome, David, and welcome back, Chris, good to have you all up here, look forward to working with you for the next few years. We're not always going to agree, but that's not our job, is to agree, but in the past, we always disagree for reasons and then move on to the next item, so I think it'll be good, and it will be a learning experience, but you work for the city, so it won't be as bad as some of us that came in cold. The Moore County, I've been thinking about them a lot, that just brings up a big issue of how fragile our electric grid system is, and there's only so much you can do, so let's keep those people in mind, I know they're pretty cold about now. That's it.
Mr. Dry?
Obviously, we live in a changing world each and every day, and we all need to send our prayers to the folks of Moore County, and hope the good Lord continues to shine his grace on us and help make this a better place to live, work, do business. Chris, welcome back. Chris, glad to be sitting beside you again, we've done this for seven to nine years. David, welcome, I know we've talked about it a long time over the years to throw your name in the hat and congratulations. We have a very progressive council, and with the addition of Dr. Chris and David, we'll have other new perspectives coming in to help us look at things maybe differently, or in a different perspective, and certainly welcome. Over the last months, we keep hearing when Jersey Mike's going to open up, they will open up Wednesday of this week, so enjoy, and again, welcome, folks.
Mr. Hunt?
I'm just excited to be a part of this and look forward to working with each one of you. Again, I'm going to have, I'm going to have a lot to learn, but I'm ready to, I'm ready to get started.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to make a request, having said out there some, please speak into these microphones, people out there cannot hear you, do not understand what you're saying, so please do that.
I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6, for confidential privileged information, consult with attorney, fur and others versus the City of Albemarle Economic Development to prevent the premature disclosure of an award and personnel.
So moved.
Second. Motion by councilmember Hall, second by councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Entertain a motion that we go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Who made that?
I did.
Motion by councilmember Dry, second by councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Coming out of closed session, we have nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion or a discussion on considering accepting the grant from Golden Lee in the amount for $756,100 for site preparation at ABC.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until December 19th at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Dry, second by councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.